Now I'll call this meeting to Jacksonville City Council order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance today and who will be watching the meeting on G10 television. To begin with, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Robert Warden, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, John Carter. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we pause again to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this beautiful day and for the blessings you so graciously have bestowed upon us as the city of Jacksonville and upon us each individually. As we live through these times of COVID-19, the death and sickness that it brings, as we live through racial, social, political unrest, teach us to listen, to listen that we might understand, not to listen so that we might generate a response. Teach us to seek, to seek your will and guidance in all things, knowing that it's only by seeking to attain that do ever hope to have perfection and more and more community and civilized discourse among our people. Be with our military members this evening who are serving us here and around the world, their anxious families, and as always, give your guidance and your direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Let's be seated. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We come to our first section of public comment for the evening. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak at public comment? Please indicate by raising your hand. So, no one. So we're going to go on to the adoption of minutes and consent items. The minutes are from April 6, 2021, regular workshop meeting.
Boo was option of the minutes and the consent items as shown.
As far as discussion, Dr. Woodruff, would you mind explain, tell us a little bit about Bill 349 and House Bill 401 and why it's important to us as a city?
Mayor, Mr. Counsel, good evening. It's always a pleasure to be with you, Mr. Warden, especially good to have you up and about. We know that the recovery is coming along well.
Yes, thank you.
Several weeks ago, we were notified by Senator Lozera that there was a Senate bill with a companion House bill relative to the requirement or mandate that multiple family must be a component of all development, all new development. The city of Jacksonville has experienced over the last decade the free market constructing nearly 2,400 multiple-family units out of roughly 3,000 multiple-family units that were permitted. In that same time period, the city experienced roughly 1,500 single-family homes. We believe that multiple family is an important component of our development as a community. However, I, as your manager and as a former private sector person working in the development industry, do not believe that it is government's place to mandate. The resolution before you asks for the state legislature, both House and Senate, to oppose Senate Bill 349 and House Bill 401, not because we're opposed to multiple family, but because we're opposed to the government establishing mandates. The free-market system has worked well in Jacksonville in the 11 years that I've been here. For government, whether it's at the city level, county level, state level, or even federal level, to mandate how development should occur, in my opinion, as your manager is wrong. I ask you tonight to adopt this resolution opposing these two bills. Do you have any questions about this?
Thank you, Dr. Warden. We have a motion in second. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes and consent items? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So we'll move on. Next, we have public hearing, and this will be the public hearing on the 2122 fiscal year budget, and Dr. Woodruff will present this item.
It is that time of the year when the city and literally every local government in the state of North Carolina is in the process of adopting their budget. We operate on something called the fiscal, F-I-S-C-A-L, fiscal year. It is different than the calendar year. The fiscal year for the city is July 1 through June 30. So the budget that we're holding the public hearing on this evening is relative to the revenues, taxes, and expenditures for next fiscal year, which begins July 1. As we say, the North Carolina law establishes our fiscal year. It also establishes the fact that we must adopt a balanced budget, and it must be adopted no later than June 30 of 2021. So you, as a council, have approximately 10 weeks to work on your budget and to determine. The public hearing this evening is on a budget that will keep the tax rate at the same level, 64.2 cents. It does contain a water and sewer rate increase of 2.25% based upon a rate model. In the next several weeks, Gail and Wally, Gail Maes, Finance Director, Wally Hanson, the Public Services Director, will be reviewing with you that rate model. The proposed budget, as shown, is divided into funds, F-U-N-D, fund. What that means is spending categories. The general fund of the city is predominantly paid for by your property tax and by sales tax. The proposed budget for the coming year is $52 million plus. The water and sewer fund, it is created and funded totally by revenues charged to all of the users of our water and sewer system, and you will see that that budget is $26.8 million. Solid Waste Fund is a combination of revenue. It's a combination of revenue from the commercial garbage collection, from residential fees, and also from a subsidy from the general fund. That budget is roughly $8.6 million. The Stormwater Fund, commonly referred to as the rain tax, is the money that we each pay every month relative on our utility bill to stormwater. Those dollars go specifically for addressing drainage issues in the city, and that budget this year is $3.2 million. Capital Projects and Grants, $18.9 million, for a total of over $109 million. The budget schedule, you began to work on April 6 in workshops. You can see April 6, 13th, tonight is the 20th for the public hearing, then the 27th, May 4th, May 11th, May 18th for workshop and potential adoption, and then other workshops, potential adoption as needed. At this time, we would like the mayor to open the public hearing so that anyone who would like to address the council on their thoughts about the proposed budget, about expenditures, or about taxation, they're welcome to come forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. At this time, we recessed the regular council meeting and opened the public hearing on the 2021 budget. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing no one here present wishes to speak to the budget, we'll go on to item number eight, which is a Unified Text Ordinance Amendment. And this is a, this is an amendment to Article 4, Use Standards, in Section 4.1, Use Table for Governmental Facilities, and Jeremy Smith will be in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Agenda item eight is another proposed UDO text amendment, and this one is regarding governmental facilities, specifically governmental offices and governmental distribution or maintenance facilities currently are not permitted by right or special use in our residential zones. That is the issue at hand. And so staff is bringing forward you a proposed change to the UDO to allow them as a special use. And the reason behind this request is the city, or the county, or even at the state level may have opportunities, be it buildings they own or properties come available, to provide services inside residential areas or use what could potentially be vacant buildings. Currently, as the ordinance is written, they are not permitted. So if community development or neighborhood engagement, or Department of Neighborhood Engagement, wanted to open an office in a neighborhood where citizens may not be able to get to City Hall readily or need services that are more available, they don't have that avenue. And so with this recommendation, we took it to the planning board last week and are proposing to allow via special use governmental offices and maintenance or distribution facilities as a special use in all residential zones. This would match what we already do with fire station and EMS facilities. They are a special use in the same zones. That is the bulk of my slides there. But with that being said, the staff and the planning advisory board are recommending that city council approve this change, that it is consistent with Policy 5.6 of the Camalean Use Plan, and that is reasonable and in the public interest. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Mayor, let me make a couple of other comments if we could. As the public will remember, and certainly you remember, at the, I believe it was two workshops ago, we discussed with the mayor and council the possibility of using the Barn Street Fire Station as a center for the transportation traffic area. As we looked at that, we, it has come to our attention that it, under current zoning law, that is not permitted. So just for full disclosure to you and to the public, one of the reasons why this and the primary reason this is before you tonight is to allow us then to move forward with the process that eventually could lead to Fire Station 2 on Barn Street being converted into the traffic center. Want to make sure, as Jeremy has said, he's used the term special use permit. If you approve this text amendment tonight, what it does, it allows a process to begin. It does not automatically allow the fire station to be used as a traffic center. Rather, it allows the process to be applied for. So if you approve this this evening, the city intends to then file the necessary application, just as any citizen would have to file, so that we will then go through the public hearing process, notifying neighbors, going back through the planning advisory board, and eventually back to you as the mayor and council to determine, will a special use permit be issued for the conversion of the fire station on Barn Street into a traffic center? Jeremy, did I misstate any of that?
No, sir. You were 100% accurate.
Any other questions of Mr. Smith?
I think just as the attorney pointed out, so the public does not get concerned that the city is just arbitrarily locating facilities, that the special use process requires a public hearing, requires a public hearing to allow the people to vote, to voice their opinion as to whether it's desired or not desired.
Thank you.
Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
On this fire station issue, could we not have gone and rezoned that property without the impossibility?
The building is surrounded all by residential, in this case, residential, single-family seven. If we were to rezone even conditionally, it would, we could be sued for spot zoning because of the size of the property and that it's four, I couldn't give you a distance, but at least a mile or more in the general radius is all residentially zoned. So it seemed better, we even looked at the permitted, but as Dr. Woodruff stated, want to give the public the opportunity to come out and say, you know, we don't want this, or hey, we want this via the special use permit process.
And so the fire station was allowed special use?
It would be today. Being Barn Street was there many, many years before the UDO was adopted, a prior zoning ordinance may have allowed EMS or fire station as a permitted use in residential zones. But if a residential property was proposed for that use today, they would have to go the special use route.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, I'm going to recess the regular meeting and open the required public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone wishes to speak to this matter present? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, reconvene the council meeting, council being asked to consider the Unified Development Ordinance text amendment found in attachment A.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment as consistent with Policy 5.6 of the Camalean Use Plan, that it's also reasonable and also in the public interest.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a workshop item, which would be number nine, and this is a discussion or review of the FYI 22 budget.
Last week, we began the detailed department reviews in an overview session, and tonight we'd like to continue with that with a number of the general fund items. Gail Maes, the Finance Director, and her staff are to be commended for the outstanding work they have done to put this together. I know that while the taxpayers are comfortable that you're not proposing and we're not asking you to propose a tax increase, it is still going to be a challenging budget year. You'll recall that last week, we showed you information regarding a number of departments, and tonight we're going to continue with that. What you will notice is that at the top of each of these slides, there is a page number, and that corresponds to the pages that are in your book or are on your iPad. I know that with the change over the iPad, several of you have had difficulty. That's the reason why I don't have an iPad. I still like the old-fashioned paper. So what we'd like to do is begin on page 53. I've asked Anthony to also come up because it has to do with Jacksonville Transit, and there may be some questions that you have. So if you'll join me on page 53, and we're talking about Jacksonville Transit, there are a couple of things that I would like to remind the, remind you and the public. Does everybody have page 53? Actually, it's 54 and 55 is where the numbers are. Everybody good? Simon B maybe having a little technical difficulty? While you're working on the, while you're working on the technology, let me give a couple of general statements. Due to COVID-19, pardon me, the mayor and council months ago waived the fare. Normally, the fare is a dollar and a half, I believe, for adults, and Anthony, 75 cents for children. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and seniors.
Okay, and seniors. So if I ride it, I get 75 cents, and I get to claim being a child. Is that the way it works, Anthony?
As you get to ride for free.
Oh, that's a good answer. Appreciate that. But through the remainder of this fiscal year, the mayor and council have already voted that you will continue to have ridership on the transit system free. What we have seen there, though, is a significant increase in ridership. Anthony, could you share with us from memory some of your ridership numbers?
From memory, not too much, but some of the high points. This has been the highest ridership year thus far for Jacksonville Transit since we started. Free fare ridership has been very strong, but we've also operated this entire time with an abundance of caution with COVID-19. So the passengers really appreciate the opportunity to ride Jacksonville Transit for free, and I think if you spend any time on the bus, you'd know that those folks are, they're going to work, they're going to school, and they're doing productive things with those trips. One thing that does come to mind is that it was last month or the month before, ridership aboard Camp Lejeune doubled. So it went from basically 3,000 passengers, passengers a month to over 6,000. And I think that's just an indicator that they're freeing up some of the mobility on the base, and some of those folks are really kind of pent up, ready to come out into town and enjoy the things that we have to offer.
When you look at the funding mechanism for the transit system, you will find that the vast majority is funded through federal and state grants. The overall operation has a match that the city has to make, and you will notice that it is roughly $447,000. But Anthony, the percentage of operating costs, not capital cost, operating costs for federal, state, and city is what percent?
Well, operating, it's 50, 25, 25. But then because of the various formulas, we're able to actually drive that down pretty significantly for some line items in the budget.
Okay. The bus system is operated by First Transit under contract. We're in the second year, I guess we're actually getting ready to begin the second year.
This is our second year. We're getting ready to go into that.
Okay, second year of five, and the contract is right at $1 million. The city is responsible for providing the buses, all the shelters, all of the maintenance. The contractor is responsible for operating the system, including hiring all of the drivers. Anthony, any other comments before we ask council any questions they have on this budget?
No, sir. Really, the line share of the change here for next fiscal year has to do with increased sanitizing of the vehicles, so there's a cost associated with that, little bit of preventive maintenance increase, and a little bit of fuel. So a little bit here and there kind of adds up to what you see on the screen there.
Questions?
So you've got charges for services in the budget, but we're not charging. How is that going to reconcile itself?
The, I'm sorry, go ahead. So the intent is to start charging for fares come July 1st.
And so this past year, we're just going to run it?
This past year, we were using the federal money from CARES, the 100% money. So that comes with zero match, and that's what allowed us to offer fare free with no out-of-pocket from the city. And in fact, that's really what the money was intended for from the federal government. So we're intending to start charging fares come July 1st, and that's what the $205,000 is there.
Right, and others was supplanted by them.
But if, on the other hand, the federal money continues to have opportunities for free fare, we will keep you posted. But as Anthony said, we're assuming that we will go back to the fare box July.
Transportation Center funded in this budget, it will be completed in this budget, won't it?
The transportation, yes, sir, will be completed in this budget, and I think that's probably the next one that we're getting ready to talk about.
Actually, Mr. Bitner, the $5 I paid you for that intro was perfectly timed.
Wasn't enough, I'll tell you that.
Page 57, Jacksonville Station. I know that many of you are like I am, we drive by that part of the city, if not daily, weekly. It is an impressive facility, and you are to be commended for the vision and what is going on on that property. It is helping redevelop that entire zone. This budget, of course, has to do with actually opening up Jacksonville Station. And Anthony, what would you guess is the current opening date?
Sometime October is my guess.
And is that 2021, '22, or '23?
It better be '21.
Okay. No, it's moving along well. We had hoped to have it opened earlier. This budget does assume, though, that it's a 12-month expenditure. If you'll notice on page 58, the total operating expense is going to be almost $320,000. The good news is that the city's general fund will only have to put in revenue of little over $31,000, and that is because of the FTA grant money, the lease of part of the facility to outs, and then the MPO lease. And so overall, we're going to be operating a $300,000 operation with about 10% of that coming from the city.
Sir, if I could interject some good news.
Please.
The lease agreement, the draft lease agreement for Greyhound has come in, and it looks like we're going to generate about $18,000 to $20,000 a year off of that. So hopefully, that $31,000 will continue to come down.
Any questions on this budget? Now, Mr. Bitner, would you like to give us another segue on another budget item?
You're on your own this time.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yes, sir.
Let's look at page 81. I don't think I skipped anything. Fleet Maintenance. When I look at these numbers, I'm always amazed at what Ed and his staff can do. In the budget notes on page 83, you'll notice that it talks about the fact that they main 633 vehicles, and they do that with 12 people. Gail is the department director. Ed Richards is the director supervisor of the fleet maintenance, and we are very fortunate with the level of qualified people that we have. A couple of things I found interesting is that if you look at note three, in FYI 21, we're assuming we're going to use 239,484 gallons of unleaded gas and over 206,000 gallons of diesel. You know, we are a service-oriented organization, and if I had had to guess at how many gallons of gas between police and fire and building and garbage and sanitation and water and sewer, I'm not so sure I could have come anywhere near this. I will remind you that one of the policies that we've had for a long time is that we over-budget the expenditure price for fuel. Hopefully, that's going to stay true for this year. We've all seen the gas pump go up 50 cents in the last short period of time. But this budget continues to assume $3.15 for unleaded and $3.45 for diesel. I will remind you, that's the price we pay, that's not the price the public pays, because the public has to pay road tax on top of that. But your budget, as you can see, has gone up just a little bit, but these people who operate this department, I would encourage you, once we get the budget behind us, that we go back and start visiting some of the departments in workshops so that you can really see the level of the work that your people do, not just in this department, but other departments. Gail, any comments on fleet?
Nope, they do a great job.
Mayor and council, any questions?
What was the reason for the big increase from 20 to 21? Probably told us before, but now I've forgotten. Did we transfer some personnel and, or obviously, must have been some realignment.
We made one, one person from part-time to full-time, I believe.
But that didn't make up $900,000.
Well, he asked specifically about that. I believe it was just the cost of parts. That's the category it's in.
Yes, if you look at.
Parts, repair parts.
If you look at page 82, under expenditures, line item three, it went from 200,000 to 280, uh, I'm sorry, $2 million to 2.8 million. Uh, we will verify that, sir. John says it was IT charges. That's kind of a sore topic with a lot of departments. You know, isn't it something to have an attorney who has a sense of humor? I did, that's just. Page 117, Community Development. The revenues for community development come from two basic areas. And Dr. Washington asked about this the other day when Tracy was making a presentation. Program revenue and then the entitlement. The entitlements come from the federal government because we are a city large enough to be quote-unquote entitled for HUD. You can see that over the years, this number has stayed pretty stagnant. And this proposed budget is right at $369,000. Program income is basically where we have made loans to people to rehab their house, and they're paying it back over a 10-year period. So fortunately, over the years, our program income has been in the $200,000 to $300,000 range. And one of our goals is to try to have enough program income so that between the program income and the HUD entitlement, we have roughly a half a million dollars to operate. You can see the program income for the coming year is $219,000. You will recall that the city has purchased a number of units in Myrtlewood, also known as Country Club Villas. Okay. When we sell those two units, the city is going to be financing them ourselves out of program income. And then all of the payments will come directly back to the city to continue to build the program income. You can see in the expenditures, the capital projects, that's the area primarily for loans and development. And then the capital outlay of 130,000, that is most likely going to be where we continue to try to either buy properties to own and sell and rehab, or where we're doing some type of capital outlay for parks. We've been very fortunate that community development has funded the new restrooms at Jack Am Yet this past year. I'm sorry, at Georgetown this past year, at Jack Am Yet in the past, along with the splash pad and a number of other park improvements at either Georgetown or at, uh, Jack Am Yet. Any questions that you have regarding the community development budget? Page 141. Now, the public may wonder, why are we skipping pages? It was because at the last meeting, we went through the departments, most of the departments in between these pages, and these are the, the areas where we felt we needed a little bit more explanation. The City Hall Maintenance, when this building was purchased and rehabbed, the council asked us to keep detailed records regarding how much this building cost. One of the things I would like to point out is on page 143, note number five. The renovation of the current City Hall building was financed through Bank of America with installment loans. The loan was paid in full in FY 2018. Had several citizens ask, are we still paying on this City Hall? And the good news is, no. The bad news is, it requires a lot of maintenance, just like your own house. So you will see on note number four, the City Hall is currently in a four-phase HVAC replacement project. Six rooftop units were replaced in FY '20, meaning last year. Five rooftop units are being replaced this year, and six units are to be replaced next year. Someone asked me, why are we not replacing all the units at the same time? And the answer is, we don't want them all to wear out at the same time. We purposely try to spread these types of expenditures so that we don't have, suddenly have to buy 15 units or they're all dying generally in the same summer month. One of the requests is for an additional custodian. I will tell you that I do not recommend that. You will be looking at that, uh, in, in subsequent weeks. We currently have two custodians working in the building. One of those is paid by the general fund. The other custodian was hired and is using the federal COVID money so that we can, that qualifies for the extra cleaning. Once we get C-19 COVID behind us, I believe we can go back to one custodian for this building. Every city employee pitches in every week by doing their own recycling. Every city employee is responsible for taking care of their own immediate area. We even have vacuum cleaners in areas so that when Ron is getting out all of the shredded material and some of it spills on the ground, what does Ron do? He calls John, because John has the license to operate the vacuum machine, and we take care of cleaning it. Actually, Carmen makes sure that we all stay clean up there. But I want you to know that as part of our threes and recognizing tight money, we do ask our employees to be part of the daily cleaning of this facility. Uh, Gail, any comments on this budget? Counsel, any questions on this budget?
Yeah, I have, I just question, you know, we don't have a, is this the only building that we keep separate maintenance expenses on? Uh, you know, I, I think of the public, uh, you know, public safety building being a rather large building, we don't bother to track it separate, do we?
Um, not in the same manner that we do this. We do split some of the expenses between fire and police in that building and the same in the Public Services Building that I believe has streets and sanitation in it. We do, uh, divvy out the utility bills, but not to the level that we do in this building.
And, and why, what was, did the previous council require that, that this we broke out? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand why we track one separate building and, and break it out from other, other maintenance.
If you look at the top, you, it, it's spread out between the funds. It allows the Water Sewer Fund to, to pay a portion of the bills for this building and the general fund. The other buildings are significant, like, the fire and police are both general fund buildings. So the money's not coming from any different. Fund. Um, the Public Services Building, most of theirs is general fund in one building and Water Sewer in the other building. So it's, there's not the significant breakout like there is here.
Man, I don't, I don't mind. I mean, but it just, it just struck me as odd. Uh, you know, all the other years, I never, didn't, didn't strike me as odd, but this year it did, so.
Any other thoughts or questions on this? Page 179, Information Technology. The city attorney loves information technology, so he's going to review the budget for you. Mr. Carter, any comments?
Everything you see here is delegated to an individual department. There is no such thing as an ITS budget. The budget is allocated for each department to pay their own way, unless it's a minute portion of it that belongs to, uh, the ITS department. But I really don't.
They just exist to serve us, therefore, we pay them as the, and so forth. Have I stated that correctly, sir? I think you've stated that correctly. Counsel, you need any clarification on that?
What was the purpose, um, about the Anselo County revenue? What is that going towards again?
Okay. The Anselo County revenue, uh, has to do with something I have no idea about. I can tell you this, Sturgeon's, the fiber.
Fiber. We, we provide fiber lines that allow the county admin building to connect to the internet and also send their video feed here to our studio so it can be sent out to G10.
You'll notice Sturgeon City, I do know the answer to that one. Uh, Sturgeon City is on our computer system. And just as every department, mayor and council, city council, uh, the city manager, clerk, finance, as John said, every department pays for their equipment. So Sturgeon City uses city equipment, and therefore, they are billed every year, just like each department. And their bill, like each department, fluctuates depending on what type of equipment that they're using.
Just another comment about other revenue from fiber. You approved the agreements tonight, and once we get the fiber in place, there'll be other payments coming from like Onwasa, you know, and, uh, and additional payments from the county for additional fiber.
One of the challenges that you are going to be facing is shown in note, note, note in, let's do that again, in comment number five. You remember that about six weeks ago or so, Chad Su was in front of you talking about the, uh, main computer system? One of the decision packages that we'll be discussing with you is hiring a consultant to work for the next year on coming up with what our new computer system will look like. That is not built into your base budget. It will be a decision that we will make at a later date, probably two meetings away. Any other questions on IT? Mr. Carter, did we cover it satisfactorily?
Yes, sir.
I have to ask, what's the ERP solution?
It's the computer software that we use. It's the computer software we use.
That's the name of it?
Well, it's enterprise, it's an enterprise system is what, and I can't think of the, the actual E, what ERP stands for, but, you know, our, it's the HTE system replacement where we use it for our financial backbone, and it has other modules on us. They, like, for example, utility billing, uh, planning, permitting. And we use it, uh, down in fleet maintenance to basically track the costs and that, so it's.
I, I can guarantee you, before the meeting's over, Mr. Massey will have Googled ERP, and we will know the answer to that. So. Media Services. In the past, we had a number of budgets that our former assistant manager was involved in. We have streamlined those, and you will find in several budgets, including the general fund, non-departmental, as well as this, that there are monies that used to be in a different budget that no longer exist, has now come to this budget or to other budgets. Uh, Media Services is basically the four people who do all of the media work. You know, Kevin, Covey, Lisa, and Kim. The position that was in the manager's office is not being filled this year. It's not being budgeted. It is a budgeted authorized position, but we do not intend to budget the money to actually hire someone. I want you to understand, it's a budgeted position. It's in the authorized positions. It's just the money for that position is not there. I've been asked, are we going to add a fifth person to media? And the answer is no. Given the, what I think are very tight budgetary times and some of the challenges that we're facing, you will find in this budget that two department head-level positions are being eliminated. That was Lily Gray's position and Glenn Hargit's position from a funding standpoint. In Glenn's position, we are holding the authorized position, but again, no money. In Lily's area, we are, as you will see later, but we might as well cover it now, we are splitting that one leadership position into two worker positions, part-time positions, not two full-time positions. So think of it this way. You have one full-time position authorized for 40 hours or more, uh, a year. You're going to go to two part-time positions authorized at no more than 20 hours a week. And I will tell you, the financial savings to the city in both of those will total well over $200,000. I know that Mr. Thomas has said before that when you look back at the number of upper management positions that we have eliminated over the years and moved them into what I will call more of the direct delivery, not managerial positions, we have eliminated about $700,000 worth of management. That could be good, that could be bad. All I know is this, in tight budgeting, we have found ways to continue to address putting more, as Mike Inara has said in the pa, in the past, putting more shoe leather on the street and less management people in seats. I think that's the way you said it, Mike. Is that generally correct?
General.
Okay. In this budget, you will notice that, as John said about IT, this budget is split into different funds, and is based upon the allocation formula and the number of hours. You will also notice that Onwasa makes a contribution, as does the county. While the county does not meet in this room anymore, they do have the support services, and it is our system that's literally behind the wall over there that actually broadcasts, and we help out at the county. Same thing with Onwasa. Mr. Bittner has been a long-term advocate of the annual calendar. It is in this budget. We publish about 19,000 calendars, and we will find that every year, uh, we have more and more people who want more and more of the calendars. I had a person call the other day and ask if they could have a calendar for each of their children. And I said, well, where in town do they live? We'd be happy to deliver them. And they said, they don't live in town. I want to mail it to them so that maybe they can go to their cities and encourage them to produce a similar calendar. So I said, well, for a charge of $10 a calendar, we'll be happy to. No, it gets us a lot of good public relations. So I hope you continue to support having this calendar. And the media staff is certainly to be commended for the quality of what they do. Mr. Bittner, comments?
About the budget, yes. Debt proceeds, 91,000. What is that?
That's on capital outlay.
It's the last item in funding sources.
Going to fund some equipment purchases?
Well, I understand it's borrowed, but for what, for where?
Debt proceeds under funding sources.
Is that a part of the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some borrowing we did?
Yes, sir. Actually, we're buying a new vehicle for the, uh, Media Services this year. The old van that they've had for probably 15 years is now outdated. And so, uh, part of that is buying the, uh, the new van for them. And then also. I'm sorry.
A video server.
Video server, okay.
Some of the production room equipment that needs to be life-cycled. ERP is Enterprise Resource Planning System, which is basically a business management software, a suite of integrated, uh, applications.
I knew that, Ron. I just wanted to see if you could find it.
Mike.
I lost my case. Give us that again. ERP stands for what?
Enterprise Resource Planning. It's an Enterprise Resource Planning System.
That's not in Wikipedia, is it?
But I will tell you, that was brought to you by IT because Ron was able to use his IT equipment to Google this to give you a budget answer, so.
My IT assessment to the city manager's budget.
Back to the general fund, we would like to just go back and, uh, Back to the general fund, we would like to just go back and, I know we're kind of jumping around the book, but we're now to the point where there's not a lot of discussion other than questions that you might have. So if we could go back to page 49. Anthony, if you'd come back up again, this is traffic signals. On page 50, you will notice that one of the, that the total budget is almost 1.2 million dollars. You will also notice that 384,000 of that is streetlights. Several years ago, Ron and Anthony and others worked with Duke Power and with Jones Angelo to convert from the old traditional streetlights to LEDs. We've actually seen a reduction in our bill. Now, it's not a significant reduction, but this is the department that actually funds all of the streetlights throughout the city. I have no idea how many there are. Anthony, you have a guess on how many streetlights we have?
Roughly 4,000.
Roughly 4,000. Okay. This is also the department, as you will see, that receives a lot of funding from the DOT on different schedules. You'll recall that we put in a traffic management system. The center is at the Center for Public Safety. I know you have, you have visited it. We encourage the public, once we open up again, to also visit it. But I believe we control not only traffic signal intersections inside the city, but on the base and some outside the city now?
Yes, sir.
Would you guess how many?
So, public signals, I think we're up to about 95. So that's city as well as county. And then on the base, I think we're at close to 30.
And those are intersections?
Yes.
Okay. So, but this is your, your traffic center. Questions or comments on this budget? Next is police and fire. So if you'll give up your seat.
Are you going to stay or are you going to go?
Well, we'd like for you to stay, but not in that seat. Mike, come on up. T, why don't you come on up too? You may have to bring a chair with you.
I want to remind you of this slide before we get into police and fire.
The property tax, literally 100% of it, if you want to look at it that way, goes to police and fire. If you do all of the numbers, property tax does not cover the total budget for police and fire. Some of that has to come from other sources, sales tax or wherever. In the police department, we'll go back one slide, page 89. Let me mention a few things that, that we have little control over, but impact a budget like this. Because of the North Carolina Retirement System mandates by the board, not a legislative act, not a city council act, but the retirement board, this budget went up over $100,000 just to cover the additional requirement for funding the retirement plan. Health insurance, it went up $50,000. There's a separation allowance of $400,000. You add all those things together, very easily, you're over half a million dollars of things that the city council really doesn't have any jurisdiction over. Mike, would you explain to the public and remind the council the separation allowance, how that works?
The separation allowance is when somebody retires after 30 years' service, they are paid a, an amount, I think it's .89% per year that they're there. And what it is, it's to offset the money that they would get from social security. So it goes from whatever age they retire up until 62. And that's, that's a state mandate that, that, because many times police officers have 30 years' service, they retire after 30 years. They might be in that system for six or seven years before they, before they're eligible to draw social security.
One of the things.
So it automatically would discontinue for them, once they reach 62, whether they chose to go on social security or not?
Whether they chose to go on social security or not, it ends at 62. The idea is, is it offsets those costs until they're eligible to draw social security.
But it does not get offset if they were to retire at 30 at age, I'm just going to pick a number, 50, 55 years old or so. If they go out and get another job, they don't have that impact. It doesn't reduce their separation allowance like it would if you were to work social security for, you know, for every $2 you earn, $1 withheld or something, doesn't do that?
No.
Interesting.
If I retired today, then I would, I would draw my separation allowance until age 62 and then it would stop. And it'd be up to me to decide what I wanted to do, whether I would collect social security or whatever that might be.
The factors there are times, years of service.
That's correct.
Based on their highest final salary.
That's correct.
So if they only work five years, say they started at age 50, retired at 55, they'd be entitled to what, how much? They'd be entitled to seven years of the supplement.
Right.
But it would be a small amount.
It'd be reduced.
Yeah, smaller amount.
You also have to think about this as a tunnel. This number really doesn't vary year from year. And the reason why is because we have fortunately a number of police officers who were with us a long period of time. But you have people every year who are retiring, let's say at age 52 or 54, and at the same time, you have one or two people who are reaching the 62. So it's just like cars in a tunnel. Has certain capacity, but for every car that exits a tunnel, a new car's coming into the tunnel. So this number of roughly $400,000 has been in your budget and will be in your budget. I mean, it's just.
And it is, and Gail can correct me, but it's, it's based upon, for example, I'm eligible to retire, I could collect my, the, so they have to budget for what, as if I retired today. That has to be in, in the budget in case I did retire today. So it's based on a.
We actually have an actuarial study every year and we've been setting aside money for as long as I've been here in an account to pay that, those funds as they come due. Now, we pay the current, the current salaries that we pay come out of that pot of money, but there is a reserve there to pay future payments that actuarially is determined so that you don't come up at the end and need a whole bunch of money. It's, it's being set aside annually to pay for the current employees.
And that is a state mandate, correct?
The set aside is not, it's just something that's been done for the 23 years I've been here, we set aside an amount every year.
Thank you. The budget also contains $430,000 for overtime. Now, overtime is caused by a number of issues. Having the court system closed has impacted overtime, but now it's back open. What people, when they normally think of overtime, they just think of, well, an officer worked an extra two hours. They don't realize the number of days that officers are required to be in court or in training. And when they're in training or in court, they're there, but they're not taking away from the number of personnel who are supposed to be on the street. So when you look at the overall budget and you see, you know, $430,000 for overtime, that's something that is very difficult to ever reduce. Chief?
There are a number of special events that are included in there, the run for the warriors and, and other things that, that are required. And typically, we have, we have VIP visits, presidential visits, and those can be rather expensive depending on where that, where that VIP would go. So those are also in the budget. And then obviously overages for whatever we might be doing, a homicide case or other things for criminal investigators. They just don't stop when, when their time is up, they continue investigating that case, sometimes well into the night and the next morning in order to resolve it.
Any questions regarding this budget?
So the overall budget's going up about $2 million. It seems like a lot of it's in this, under the, under the taxes and fees, you've got three, three grants. Are these one-time grants that have just come about and then, then they're in below in the expenditure? So can you help me understand?
So there's a number of grants that we get on a regular basis. That would be the school resource grant. It would also be the E911 funds and then the bulletproof vest grant. Those are recurring while they allocate those, that funding every year, those are, we, we get that money every year. But we have several grants that, we have the JAG grant, we have a number of grants with the Governor's Crime Commission. We also have the COSAP grant, which, which we administer. That is the opioid grant that pays for folks that are being in, in the Dicks Crisis Center. It pays for some things that we're doing with the county, but that, that grant that we have there is, is almost a million dollars and it's, we're administering it so it's going through our budget.
Oh, I see. So it's not actual increase in your activity, it's more of a?
Well, we'd like to think it is because, I mean, it's part of the opioid, addressing the opioid, although a lot of the work is being done by, by other entities and we're just contracting with them.
The grand school resource officer funds, 8,802,000 and it proposes 764,000.
The, the reason that that's gone down is because the school resource officers, we had two full-time, the, the school was paying for two full-time SROs that were working on the year-round budget, the year-round school year. And this year, there won't be a year-round school year, it'll be just that nine-month year. So imagine this budget, this number will change next year because my understanding is, although they haven't decided yet, that they're looking at going back to the year-round school. And if they go back to the year-round school, then they'll fund those officers at 100% in the elementary schools that are doing the year.
When you say "they," who is "they"?
The school system.
Yes.
But what's the $8 million, that as a total of other grants you receive for school resources?
You know, what you'll notice, I'm sorry?
Sit's inception.
Sit's inception. And that's the same comment, if you notice on page 91, the bulletproof vest, while this year proposes $41,450, over the years, we've received $745,000 plus and so forth. So you see the running total as well as what's proposed for this year. Any other questions on the police department? How about if we cover fire and then we can take a short break and continue if that's Fire and emergency services. As you'll recall, in this FY '21 budget, you authorized the purchase of a new piece of equipment. And that's one of the reasons why you will see that when it comes to capital outlay and other things, debt service, that the numbers have been changing. T, what was the final purchase price, not including axes or ladders?
Just over $600,000.
And what's the delivery time on that?
October of 2021.
And what type of equipment are we buying this time?
New.
New?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And by what brand?
Whatever has the best price, sir.
No, I mean, the, the truck is going to be.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's a Pierce.
It's a Pierce.
Yes, sir.
And that's going to be the first Pierce truck that we have purchased in some time. I won't say that the Rosenbowers that we have been using have not been dependable. I'm just going to say, we decided, the command staff of the fire department decided it was time to give another vendor an opportunity. So you will see a new truck appear probably six months from now.
Yes, sir.
And it will be a, a different manufacturer. So I will also remind you that if it's red, it costs a lot of money. We are looking down the road, probably within the next four years, at having to fund a ladder truck. And the last time we looked at replacing the ladder truck, I believe the cost was one and a half million dollars.
Yes, sir.
So that's one of the reasons why we have the three-year equipment replacement program is so we can try to keep these huge spikes from, from occurring. So earlier in the discussions, we mentioned the record management system. That is already built into your base budget at $35,000 to start off with and then it will be a recurring $35,000. Other things that are built into the base budget, $200,000 for overtime and then for the firefighters that are involved in the step plan. And I should have mentioned, the police budget has built into it the step plan for those police officers involved. The retirement also went up by $50,000, you know, in this area. There are a number of decision packages which we will be discussing at a later date. T, any thing you want to point out in your budget?
No, sir.
Mayor, council, any questions on the fire department budget?
Yeah, I know, I know when we bring a new piece of equipment in, we generally, the one that replaced generally goes to reserve. But do, what do we do with the one that it, the reserve that got bumped? Do we, do we, is, is that something we sell on the surplus? Is that what we try to do?
Yes, sir, we do. If you remember, the last one we had, we donated to the college and they're actually using it for their fire training program.
I do remember that.
Yes, sir.
T, how was that ladder truck?
It is a 2006.
I remember it was brand new.
Any other questions on the fire department budget?
Y'all wearing those things out? I mean, is that, are we overusing this, these, they just, they just dry rot, don't they?
Yes, sir, we use them all the time. So if we're not running calls, we're training on them, sir.
And every now and then, we have deer run into the side of one of our fire trucks because I guess they, they've gotten depressed over COVID-19 like a lot of people have. We did actually have an accident in the commons, close to your house, Mr. Bittner, where three deer gave their life by running into the side of, I guess it was the Quint or what was it?
Quint IV, yes, sir.
Yeah, Quint IV. And no, the firefighters didn't go back and pick up the deer immediately and have a barbecue, just, that was just a rumor, so.
Bicycled the self-contained breathing apparatus now, right? That's on the schedule?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that should be coming up in the next few years.
Yeah. One thing that we, and that brings up a, a purchase that we're doing using the federal COVID money. We have 88 firefighters who are assigned respirators. Well, it's not quite true. There are 88 who use them. What we found was that each shift shares them. Well, that's not necessarily a good idea when you have an airborne virus. So T has worked with Gail and we have now an order, how many?
84.
84. And that will be literally a savings of, what would you guess, $75,000?
Actually, it was $115,000.
$115,000 savings where we are buying those brand-new respirators using the federal money. So that's, that's significant. Each firefighter will now have assigned to them their own respirator.
That's with care's money?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Actually, we've already received them, and they've been distributed.
Other questions about this budget? T, any other comments?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Mayor, would you like to take a short break?
Let's take a short one. Then we'll come back in. Okay, we're back in session, and Dr. Woodruff, turn it over to you.
I'd like to begin or pick up at this point with recreation. Page 100 in your book. Susan Baptist today, she asked if I would mention to you that the summer programs are currently, I'll say, on hold because the state is going to be offering summer school. Normally during the summertime, we run summer programs at a number of elementary schools. But because this year, the entire school system, high school, middle, and elementary schools are going to be offering summer school, we don't really know what level of facility availability we're going to have. So we'll keep you posted on that. She also asked me to update you. At one of our former meetings, you asked about the opportunity to open the splashpads early. They have applied to the health department for that. Currently, the earliest that the health department can give us an inspection is somewhere around the second week of May. So we may be able to open up one or two weeks earlier on both of our splashpads, but we will keep you posted on that. The last thing she asked me to mention to you was a reminder, we're coming up on Jacksonville Jamboree. That's the first Saturday in May. And I'll also remind you that this year, it's going to be very limited. It will be held at the commons from 3:00 until 7:00 with music and certain activities, all free. There'll be food vendors, so if you want food, you'll buy that. But then, we're adding this year, a laser light show. That's going to be held at Coastal Carolina Community College. David Heatherly and his staff have agreed, and I think it's something that you need to get a reservation. Because of the social distancing, we're going to have two sessions on laser lights. One will begin at roughly 7:30 to 8:00, depending on darkness. Limited to the first 200 people or cars that sign up. The second session will begin sometime between 9:00 and 9:30. Once again, you need to register. This will not be just driving by, want to stop and pull in like normal because of social distancing. But it brings a completely new activity to our community. There'll be a laser light show, like I said, on that Saturday night, the first Saturday in May. When you look at the budget, one of the large things to remember is the fact that last year, you authorized us to move from the temporary agencies to the city hiring all part-time employees. And that's one of the reasons why you'll notice that some of the accounts went up and some of the accounts went down. I will tell you, that has been very successful, and the number of turnovers has reduced significantly. We have more, almost cut the turnover rate down to nothing because of the fact that we are now directly hiring and we're paying better than what was through the temporary agency. Activity fees, you will notice, are down almost $100,000. And that is because with the school system operating the way it has, and so many of our school students being able to have virtual learning, we're projecting that we will have fewer people in our before and after-school programs. You will also notice that rentals are down just a little bit. That's the renting of shelters and those type things. However, I am very pleased to tell you that, starting in May, we are going to reopen the renting of shelters to the public. Now, that will be on a basis that if the COVID numbers stay reasonable in our community, we'll continue to rent. If the COVID numbers should go up, then we will put a moratorium again on renting those. Any other questions? I did find it interesting, just like we talked about IT charges, every department was hit by those. But the recreation department funds $25,000 every year in stormwater fees because they have 96,000 square feet of impervious area, and they're required to pay, we as a city are required to pay, just like every citizen is. Any questions you have on the recreation budget? If you'll turn over one page to Parks, I'd ask you to think back a decade to the days when we, as a city, did not mow our right-ofways. There's absolutely no comparison between how the city looks today versus the way it did back then. To show you how much the DOT appreciates that, they contribute about $18,000 a year to thank us for that. At least, it's a thought. You'll also notice, though, that the water plant is mowed by the Parks staff. And so we get a few thousand dollars a year from the Water and Sewer Fund for mowing the water plant. The city staff does not mow any of the well sites through Parks. We don't mow any of the water tanks through Parks. That is funded directly by them using either a private vendor or their own employees in the utilities department. But the Parks Department is responsible, obviously, for the parks, all of the right-ofway, and then the only thing other than that is what they do at the water plant. Any questions that you have? It's a department that is essential, and they do a great job. Any questions?
Don't they have the temporary people, too, as well?
Yes, sir, not. They do. The full-time employees, there should have been a note here, and the number is actually 19. The good catch. On page 103, the part-time, non-benefit employees, there should be 19 there, and we are the ones who hired them. So we will get that corrected. Thank you.
They're in the temporary pool and non-departmental.
In non-departmental?
Yes. We manage them as we need them, we fill them and give them a slot, and then when they're no longer needed, we take the slot back into the pool to use them year-round.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Interestingly enough, we've held several hiring events, and we've only been able to hire 13 of the 19 positions. Is Ryan, Carmen, did you see if Ryan is out there?
Yes.
Yes, he is. Here he comes. Presenting Ryan King. On page 109, we have the building inspections area. As you know, Ryan is the department director over that. You will see in the fees that we're projecting about $530,000 in building fees. By state law, 100% of those fees must go, of the building permit fees, must go to direct services. In our case, that's pretty easy because you'll see the total budget is over $700,000. In salaries, you will notice an increase in the salary line. That is because we are moving from the planning area, planning and permitting, into inspections, one of our employees, the plans inspector. So Ryan, you want to talk about that, please?
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. As you stated last week, I think you pretty much nailed it, that basically we're moving the plans examiner from the planning and permitting division to the building inspections division, which will help make sure that it's easier for the audit every year to make sure that we are not taking in more revenue than we are spending. One of the other things that we're also moving to the inspections line is some of the ERP stuff as it relates to the building permit, the e-plan system. Part of that annual maintenance, we are going to shift 50% of that program maintenance cost to the inspections line to cover, it's used at least 50% for building plans. So just to try to make sure that we keep, you know, the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So the change in this year's budget is moving that position, some technology, training, travel, overtime, everything that goes along with that movement.
Ron, what does ERP stand for?
It's Resource Planning.
I did Google it, the same time that Ron probably was during the previous segment, so.
Just checking on you.
And when we are a heavier user with that ERP, we've got both a planning and engineering module in the current system and our building permit system that allows, you know, the general public to see. You can go in there right now and check the status of your permit. You can check inspection notes. You know, once the inspector results the inspection, it automatically sends an email to the contractor on file. So if it passes or fails, they get that automatically as soon as it's done. So we are, we'll be interested to see, you know, where we move forward with the next ERP here at the city.
One thing I will mention to you relative to inspections, you will notice on note four on page 111, it is very likely we will need to request an additional inspector in mid-FY '22, coming year. The state expectation, and I don't think it's actually an expectation, I believe the way I read the law, the state requirement is that we will provide inspections within two business days. I will tell you, we meet that right now very easily. But we are beginning to see the community come out of the COVID time period. You're seeing much more commercial activity beginning again. You may have noticed as you head out towards New Bern, I know the mayor went up that way yesterday or today, and you will notice that CarMax is now back under construction. We're seeing a number of commercial activities. And we also know that within the next year or so, we're going to see three brand-new subdivisions coming online. So we have intentionally reduced the number of building inspectors when things were slow, but as the things start to build back up, we'll be asking for more employees in that area. And you'll also notice that we have two department issues relative to employees, and we'll be discussing those at a later date. Ryan, any other questions, though, on the building inspections you want to?
That's all that I have tonight?
Questions that y'all have from building inspections?
I would love, like to see a map with those approved subdivisions, just to kind of fix in my mind where that growth is occurring. I think I know, but I would still, I'm kind of a visual person. If I could just see that, that would help me a little bit.
We can get that. And for the public, I will say, one area is behind the River of Life New Church on Western Boulevard. The other two areas are within a half a mile of the Carolina Forest Elementary School, but we will get a map for you. Ryan, why don't you just keep your seat? Code enforcement, page 113. Salaries and benefits, this is an area where you will notice on page 115 that we're building into the base budget, two part-time positions. Where's that coming from? By Tracy Jackson taking over more responsibility and becoming a department director, we have moved from Lily, Pam, and Tracy just to Pam and Tracy. Lily's position is being split and reassigned. You, as a council, have said to us that you want better code enforcement. We've done, I think, a good job this year of addressing a lot of the blue tarps. And if I'm not mistaken, Code Jason, or CJ, as we call him, said the other day that we're down now to only about a dozen or so. In order to address that, we did an analysis to determine, they originally wanted a full-time person. We did an analysis of how they spend their days, and we found they spend an awful lot of time with paperwork. Okay? Paperwork's important. Why? Because when you ride through a neighborhood and you find violations, you have to come back and do all the paperwork to get letters and so forth out. What we decided was, why not hire a part-time secretary? So this year, using Lily's position, we have gone ahead and hired a 20-hour-a-week secretary to do all the paperwork so that when Frank and Phyllis and Jason are out in the field, they can be out in the field literally the whole day doing inspections instead of being out in the field and then coming inside for two or three hours doing paperwork. We've also improved their technology. So in the base budget is a part-time employee that will work 20 hours a week all year long. Also, during the grass mowing season, we put in the budget a 20-hour-a-week person that will work strictly during the mowing season, growing season. Now, I will tell you, that's still about six months. But that's what those two additional part-time benefited employees are, and they're being funded through the redirection of a full-time employee's salary and benefits. You have any questions or concerns about doing it that way? I will tell you that one of our volunteer inspectors had a personal accident and has been out of service for a little while, but we are looking forward to that gentleman being back out. And we have included in his iPad the necessary apps so that he, as he goes about his responsibilities, that he can just report those violations directly to us. Mr. Massey, would you like to carry that topic any further?
I hate to get the brand-new app and then immediately I'm unable to use it just because I'm out of service. But yeah, it seems like as part of my part-time job that I do for rental inspections, I get around the city quite a bit, actually around the county, but around the city, and it's not unusual for me to spot something. And, you know, I generally have to wait till I get back home, get on my iPad, and send the thing out to Richard. But they've actually put a, where I can put directly into the city system, a basically complaint, you know, as if it was a citizen's complaint, and then they'll follow up and investigate. I can actually take pictures of the violation and attach it to the email that I send directly to code enforcement. So I've been thinking about asking if I could become a part-time benefited employee under the code enforcement, so.
Well, actually, we'll have to get the attorney to rule on whether that's dual office holding, but we will see. We do, and all kidding aside, we really appreciate the number of things that are turned in by all of y'all. But Mr. Warden has really, with his new assignments out there with home inspections, he is definitely turning in a lot, and we greatly appreciate it. Any questions you have on this budget?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
That, I guess, that software that Mr. Ward is talking about, has that ever, because I've heard of other cities which actually let, it's a service that citizens use to try to. I don't know if we've ever tried that before, or you ever had thoughts on that, to actually report those issues?
We have, you know, the citizens have the ability to turn in through the website and so forth, the ability to turn directly in complaints. What Mr. Warden is doing is actually almost the exact same thing that our inspectors do in the field because of the software package. And I will tell you, if any of you would like to have that software package, we'll be happy to turn it in to you, too. It doesn't make you a sworn officer, but it does give us an extra set of eyes. So... It doesn't make you a sworn officer, but it does give us an extra set of eyes, so. But we can follow up and give you more explanation about how citizens can turn in complaints.
I don't get to carry a badge or anything? Okay.
Be careful for what you ask, sir. Neighborhood Improvement Services, Page 121. This is Tracy Jackson's department. You can see that there is a significant increase in the budget, and that is because of the way that we have combined from the Community Engagement Department and restructured that area. The expenditures of the former Community Engagement Department are now in the Neighborhood Improvement Services. This is also the area where you fund $20,000 for nonprofits that are given awards through the general fund. So Tracy's area covers the nonprofits that get community development money, which is a total of $30,000, and then $20,000 from the general fund in nonprofits. And if you'll recall, I believe it was the, maybe two workshops ago, she was here and mentioned the agencies that would be getting contributions from the city. Any questions on that one? Just have a few more we'd like to go through with you this evening. Unfortunately, Wally has a conflict, so he's not here. So he said if you need to cut his budget, that would be all right. But if you will look at Page 125, that's actually 126 and 127, Public Works Administration, I will remind you that Public Works Administration and Public Utilities Administration, the next two budgets, are really the same people. It's just a way of accounting for the work they do for the general fund versus the work they do for water and sewer. You will notice that in the staffing, it's not even one full person, and if you turn to the next page, you will notice under Public Utilities Administration, Water and Sewer, the balance, but this is really for the administration of these areas. The overhead allocation is budgeted on Page 128 for Water and Sewer. That is where the money is budgeted that gets transferred to the general fund, various departments. So for example, the mayor and council's budget is partly funded by Water and Sewer. It comes, it is budgeted in this area, the overhead allocation. Gail, you want to explain that any further, or is that adequate?
That's good.
Okay. Any questions on either of those pages? Page 131 is Public Works Engineering for the General Fund, and then the following two pages are Public Utilities Engineering for Water and Sewer. Currently, we do not have a city engineer. Many of you had the opportunity to meet Jason. Jason was hired away from us by the city of Fayetteville. He did an outstanding job for us the two years he was here. We are going to be looking, I will tell you, it's going to be very difficult for us to find an engineer because the economy is so hot. Private sector is paying very nicely for civil engineers. Right now, just in this eastern part of the state, there are six cities looking for city engineers that will have an impact on some of our public works projects, because, as you know, we have been building a team to design these in-house rather than having to pay a consultant. So we will keep you posted. But I did want you to be aware, in case you were not aware, Jason left us about a month ago to go to Fayetteville, so. Fortunately, we do have a civil engineer who is transitioning out of the Marine Corps, and in that transition, she has been given approval to work with us 40 hours a week. Amy, do you remember what her last name is?
No, sir.
Nice young lady, Marine Corps, and unfortunately, she and her husband will be moving to the West Coast once they transition completely out. But Amy is doing some civil engineering workforce in the two or three months that she's transitioning. Any questions on either of those budgets? Oops, sorry about that. Facility Maintenance. You will recall that Alan Baker retired. We have promoted Brian Neely. Brian is a long-term city employee with us, and he's doing an outstanding job. Alan did a great job of preparing Brian to take over the leadership. That group of 14 people maintains 170 city-owned facilities. They do an awful lot of the work themselves, but they also are responsible for actually overseeing all the contractors who do workforce. So it doesn't matter whether it's air conditioning units that are being replaced, they're there to get the specifications and to get it all out, and then to supervise it while it's being installed. On the other hand, if it's just a minor air conditioning job, they are the ones who actually do it. But you can see, $1.5 million, and it goes out much more quickly than you may realize. When you have 170 facilities of aged equipment, we're fortunate that we have some new buildings, but do you realize that the newest building we have built, if my memory is correct, is Fire Station Two? Fire Station Two is now six years old?
Six.
Maybe six or seven years old. Center for Public Safety is already eight years old. Time goes by mighty quickly, doesn't it? You'll also notice that there is an overhead allocation, and the allocation for water and sewer, solid waste, and stormwater are shown there. But the bulk of the work here is from the general fund. One thing I would also point out in this budget is that they are asking for an additional maintenance person. We'll be discussing that. I think that's going to be very difficult for us to fund this coming year, but you'll be discussing that when you look at the department issues. Any questions on that budget? These are the last ones that we would like to cover this evening. I believe that's correct. Yep, that's correct. Page 146 is Powell Bill and non-Powell Bill. The first thing that we will say to the public is that the mayor and council and the staff would like to repave every city and the street this coming year, every street in the city. Second thing we'll say is, we simply don't have the money to do it. Fortunately, you approved $1 million coming out of the fund balance, and that is giving us the ability to fund a lot more streets this coming year. And when you get the audit in, in September, October time period, you will probably want to do the same thing, look at your fund balance, and determine, are you going to allocate more money for paving? This budget, though, assumes only the revenue that we know we're going to get from Powell Bill. And you'll notice that the Powell Bill is roughly $1.7 million, and roughly half of that goes to maintenance. So you only have about $800,000 or $900,000 a year from Powell Bill for actual paving. The other portion goes towards the non-Powell Bill for drainage. You'll see there are a total of 20 employees that are there, and unfortunately, our Powell Bill money continues to slide in the negative direction. I do know that the state has a legislative committee that is studying the issue of how we are going to fund road maintenance as a state. That's going to be something that, they are talking about everything from a user fee per mile to simply gas tax changes. But as we move more and more to electric vehicles, or we move more to hybrid vehicles, the number of gallons that are purchased every year is not producing the revenue. On a side note, Mike asked me to tell you, and especially to tell Ron, that he has now documented that the hybrid explorers are getting 10 miles a gallon better gas mileage than the conventional vehicles. So I'm sure Ron will be on the phone with Mike in the morning to document all of those numbers. But stepping into the hybrid world, we are seeing much better gas mileage out of our explorers, so. Any questions you have on Powell Bill funding? Whoops, I'm sorry. Transfers.
It's just transfers on a general fund to fund matches for grants and to cover the solid waste shortage, things like that.
In the coming weeks, we are projecting that a week from tonight, we'll spend most of our time on water and sewer, and then getting into department issues. I think that the tough decisions are going to be next week and two weeks out. What are those tough decisions? One of them is going to be, what do you want to do regarding how you cover the cost of recycling? You will recall that our contract with recycling ends in October. We are facing now a quarter of a million dollars of new expenditures. You will remember that we had a presentation, Michael Connors, I thought did an outstanding job, and we'll be discussing with y'all, how do you want to cover that? I will tell you, the base budget assumes that you're not going to tax anyone for it, and that base budget has in it a quarter of a million dollars already built in. If you choose to have a fee, then that quarter of a million dollars of money that's in there from the general fund will, of course, decrease. The other difficulties that you're going to face will be issues such as the number of employees that are requested. There are over 25 employees requested by your various departments. I can simply tell you, it's unrealistic to think that we can fund 25. It's going to be difficult to fund many. Another difficult thing that you're going to face is going to be your cost of living increases for your employees. I will tell you that this week, we learned that the county budget has in it a 3% cost of living increase for their employees, plus a 2% across-the-board increase for all of their employees.
They're raising taxes.
The city budget cannot match that. Onwasa, in a transmittal from Jeff Hudson, he is going to be talking to Onwasa about their financial condition, and I don't think it's appropriate since he may or may not have talked to the Onwasa board about his thoughts. I just note that Jeff is proposing some challenges, and we'll let the Onwasa. I don't know whether our two Onwasa representatives have been told anything regarding what Jeff's thoughts are for cost of living for Onwasa employees.
Different options in terms of COLA increases, probably in the area of 1% to 3%, but Onwasa's budget was already, as of January 1st, the employees were provided a 3% COLA increase. So there's nothing in the existing budget to provide for another COLA increase, so we're discussing that and various options, along with the possibility of days off in lieu of COLA increases. So nothing definite yet.
I also know that the county has talked about giving additional holidays. Let's talk about that a minute. Because the city never closes, we're different. The water plant, we have it staffed 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Police and fire, they're always there. As your manager, I cannot recommend to you that you increase the number of holidays. Why? Because of the impact on overtime. When you give me or any of the other employees a holiday or an extra vacation day, you can, I mean, hey, city manager's office, we all know Carmen runs everything up there anyway, so John and Ron and I can be gone all the time, and since Carmen didn't get a chance to talk about her budget, we'll come back to that in a minute. The thing is, though, when people are gone in police and fire and water and other areas, that doesn't mean the office is closed. And so I can tell you that if you decide to give more holidays, be prepared for us to come back and say, we're going to have to increase the overtime in a number of areas. We're not a social service department. We provide direct services every day, and we never close. And because of that, as I said, one of the challenges that we face is the continued pressure for cost of living increases, wage adjustments, and those type things. And your challenge is going to be this, your base budget that doesn't include a lot of things is already looking at $4 million from your general fund balance. That's more money than we've balanced the budget in years. Now, that doesn't mean you shouldn't spend it, because as we all know, the audit last year was proposing to put back into the general fund balance money. It didn't use any of the, whatever it was, $2.5 million, and we actually returned to the general fund balance, what, $3 million?
$100,000.
Okay. Gail loves it when I wing it, and then she has to. The point I'm making, though, is, as you face the next several meetings, those are the tough decisions that really get down to the bottom line of the budgets.
Dr. Woodruff, would you mind repeating those raises for the county again, please?
Ron? Is it, my memory is that the county has told you 3% for cost of living and 2% across the board? Is that correct?
3% cost of living and 2% wage adjustments because of...
They're going to use COVID. They're proposing to use COVID funding to do that because of market competitiveness.
Market competitiveness, that's the figure I'm looking for.
I will tell you, not saying anything about, county makes their decisions. We don't believe you can use COVID money for wages. We'll just leave it at that. So there are 3% cost of living and 2% market adjustment. Okay? And Onwasa is still to determine their amount. Now, Carmen would like to make some statements. If you go back to... Was there anything in your budget you wanted to point out?
I think they cut the Ferrari for a digit.
Actually, the mayor was the one who cut the Ferrari out of your budget.
Yeah, well.
Any questions or thoughts at this point?
A German sounds like a good idea.
Gail, any other thoughts on the budget? Mayor, I know you have the report section, so we will turn it back over to you.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Jackson. Are there any other reports?
No reports.
Okay. No report, Tim Bittner?
No report.
Mr. Thomas?
No report.
No report.
No report.
Nobody has anything to report. I do.
I do. Just a couple of things. I did a couple of presentations last week, wanted to bring to everybody's attention. First, it was Child Abuse Prevention Month. We presented to detectives Adrian Wilson and Jason Bryce of the Special Victims Unit of the Police Department. It was National Child Abuse Prevention Month that recognizes the importance of communities working together to strengthen families to prevent child abuse and neglect. The city is proud to recognize the importance of dedicating ourselves to improving the quality of life for all children and families. Second, we have Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. It was presented to Nina Cruz and David Bledgey, which I don't see David in there. The telecommunications play an important role in today's workforce. These telecommunications serve as frontline public safety ambassadors to citizens in times of emergency or stressful situations. The City of Jacksonville is proud to recognize the service of our public safety telecommunications. With that, we have a one-city moment.
We don't have a one-city moment. The city, I was mentioning, David Patrick Cray. Birthday. You saw him in the picture a minute ago. So, if you see Patrick, you know, wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Patrick.
The other thing, I would invite you and the public, on Thursday of this week, at the Center for Public Safety, at noon, there will be a prayer vigil for civility and respect. We encourage all citizens to come out. Our chaplain for the Police Department will be conducting that, and Mr. Irvin is just an outstanding speaker, and we encourage you to attend. 12:00 noon at the Center for Public Safety. Beyond that, I have no other comments other than to continue to thank you all for all you do, and just a great group of people to work with. We are blessed. John?
No report.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?